Yeah, I know, I know. But, yeah. Fire somebody else. Just so the video. I'm not gonna.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? At this time, I'd like to introduce Edward J. Chompco Sr. to step up to the podium. Edward J. Chompco Sr. is owner of Chompco Funeral Home, United States Army Veteran. He served from 1967 to 1970 with the 1st Infantry Division. Ed did two tours in Vietnam with the 101st Airborne Division, was a master parachutist. He served as a staff sergeant and earned the Combat Infantry Badge and was recipient of the Purple Heart and Bronze Star with valor. Ed, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to bring this Wednesday, August 22nd, Board of Commissioners a meeting to order 10:00 AM, Commissioners Conference Room. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Proclamation presentations, 18-0174, Small Business Spotlight.
We have Note Fragrances. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, and you are Danielle and Mark?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
Sure. So, Mark and I are husband and wife, and we own Note Fragrances, which is a boutique perfumery and custom perfume studio located on the corner of Wyoming and Spruce, downtown Scranton. You're probably wondering what exactly that is. A boutique perfumery simply means that we manufacture scented products. So, we manufacture fine fragrances, candles, soaps, lotions, pretty much anything scented. The custom perfume studio is in our space, and that is the most unique thing that we bring to the area. That is where people can come in and make their own fragrances with us from scratch. We are the only company in the nation doing it. The way we do it is a patent pending process that we're proud of, and it'll be our fifth year in November in Scranton. We expanded this year as well and opened up another shop in Clark Summit.
Oh, my gosh.
We did a pop-up, a holiday pop-up there this past holiday season, did really well, so we opened up, decided to stay, and we're gonna stay there permanently as well.
That's awesome. Now, you have, your degree is in mental health counseling, isn't it?
Yes, actually, Mark and I both have the same master's degree that we got in Marywood. That's where we met. Mark stayed in the field for a little bit, but I decided to study the psychology of scent, and I wanted to become a psychologist who was gonna prescribe scent instead of medication. So, that's how I got into the world of fragrance. Once I got into it, I loved it and put together a business.
That's really an awesome story. You, did you set out to do that initially when you went to, first went to college?
No, no, I was just looking to be a regular old psychologist, and I was actually doing an internship at the University of Scranton, and I noticed that the college students that I was working with, they needed something other than talking to me, and I didn't want it to be medication. So, I was sort of looking in the research journals, you know, is it meditation, is it journaling, what can I offer them? And I came across some research on the powerful effects of aroma on our moods and behaviors. So, I stumbled upon it, and then once I did, I really loved it.
Well, I hear about that all the time, aromatherapy, how they, and people just swear by that.
Yeah.
I'll have to try that here. Can you bring some of that in for us?
Sure, absolutely. We invite you down anytime, come on down.
What would you recommend? Do you have, is there stress release or?
Yeah, so definitely lavender is the most researched, research scent that we go to. But what our philosophy is, is that you need to create something that connects directly to you. So, some people find lavender very relaxing, other people don't. So, the custom perfume studio experience was developed after I worked in the field and found out that what's relaxing to one isn't necessarily to the other. What makes one person feel confident makes somebody else feel sad. So, the process was built based on the need and belief that we all connect to something, and it's special to us. So, that's how the, you know, the company and the process came to be.
That's interesting, and when you say they create their own fragrance, fragrances, do you do this with the kids? Do you do, are you with any of the school districts that come in?
We, we don't do it with school districts per se, but what we offer is kids' parties. So, they'll come in. We have our adult party as well, but kids can come in during normal hours, or they can do like a birthday party, where they come in and we make fragrances with them. We also teach them about their sense of smell, so we give them some scent education as well, so they can explore their sense of smell and be comfortable with it. But then they'll make other things, they can do spa packages, where they'll make fizzy bath bombs with us, they'll do facial masks. So, it's really, really cute. The kids bring a totally different perspective to their sense of smell, so it's fun to work with both them and adults.
So, Mark, you're, you're standing, and you're kinda quiet. I'm just wondering, how do the men receive? Do you have a specific group that you work with, or how does this work in?
I'm sorry, I were hearing this.
That's okay. As a male, how do you see that working in the male market? Are you getting a lot of mail?
Yeah, it's, it's very interesting, because people who love scent, love scent, and they're very passionate about it.
Right.
And they will find us, and we've kind of become a destination, and it's a little, it's very humbling, but very cool. And a lot of the, the people who are coming in are guys from out of the area.
Yeah.
We do have guys in the area, but they'll come from like, you know, the West Coast, New York City, Philly, most recently from New Jersey, down the shore area, and they specifically come in, and they are so passionate about what they do, they're like, oh my gosh, can't believe I can make my own cologne. I came up with a couple years ago, with Danielle's help, a couple scents, six different scents that I call the Men's Organ for Guys.
Nice.
A little more masculine, if you will.
Yeah.
Some of my favorite scents, and put together, and it's kind of a, it's kind of gaining momentum with guys. It's really cool.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that for the prison commissioner. It's just interesting to me, that, that's a very interesting field, so congratulations, and great job.
Thank you.
And taking an idea and making it your own, and it's very creative.
Thank you.
It's, it's very interesting to me, so.
Thanks.
I appreciate you all coming in and the work that you've done to provide two areas where people will be working. How many employees do you have right now?
Right now, we have a total of 11.
Wow, that's great.
And they're not all full-time, but I would probably say it's an equivalent of maybe five full-time.
That is really interesting.
Yeah, so we have people on production side, we have people on, because we also have an online shop, so we're selling our products nationwide as well.
Gosh, yeah.
So, we have other channels of distribution. We also private label manufacture and do contract manufacturing for other brands, so we have quite a few different revenue channels that we work with as well. That's maybe not as most known to the public, or mostly known for our brick and mortar, but we have a lot of other things happening in the background, too.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you for featuring us, and we appreciate your support.
Absolutely.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It just seems like a very, very interesting niche business. It's kind of amazing. I never would've thought of something like that.
Yes, it is, it is.
It's interesting that Mark's been able to pick up on your expertise and develop his own thought process on it.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that works.
Yes, he lived with it for osmosis for a while, being, you know, just being together as a couple, and then at one point, I said, hey, like, we need to do this together, so it's, it's our full-time career, our full-time income, and, you know, we are really in it together to win it.
Well, I hope you continue to be successful.
Thank you.
And expand, and Lackawanna County.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I thought was very interesting was the fact that Danielle Company was formed at age 22.
Yep.
So, right, right basically out of college.
Yeah, that was started right when I was in grad school. So, when I started, you know, putting some things together, and I'd say, hey, you know, try this soap, and tell me what you think, or how does it make you feel when you're in the shower? And then people said, well, I'd like to buy what you gave me, and I said, oh, it's not for sale, and they're like, well, here's some money. And I was like, okay, I'll take that, and, you know, that was really kind of my first, I mean, I first started selling products at farm markets and just to, you know, people in general, and it's just really grown.
But that's the way that you get people to come on, and they realize what your product is. I mean, you go to those craft shows or whatever you may, you have, it's, it's amazing, but, you know, it's small business, it's yours. It's, it's, you and your, you and Mark, this is, how do I say, it's, this is your baby. You're gonna cultivate it, you're gonna make it grow, and you're gonna feed it to make it get bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
And this is something that, you know, I mean, like I said, it's your own blood, sweat, and tears.
Yeah.
So, what you make out of it is what you're gonna get back.
Exactly.
And it's not easy. We know it's not easy whatsoever.
It is.
It's not easy.
It's a tough, I mean, it's tough. One of the things I'm most proud of, I, I did go away and worked for the largest fragrance house based out of Switzerland for a few years, and that's where I got a lot of my expertise. But besides those couple years, I've written my own paycheck since I'm 22.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's, that's great.
For me personally, it's probably one of the most.
Do you write Mark's paycheck?
Most proud. I write our paycheck.
I'm only kidding, Mark, this one.
He's got his own line.
We understand.
Yeah. I mean, it's been great. People say, oh, do you, you know, do you fight as husband and wife? I mean, we're together all the time, and we do argue about business, but that's just natural. I couldn't do it without him.
You go to one side of the business, he's at the other, right?
That's how it is.
I was the business wife, I understand completely. But there's a lot of, it's a lot of work, and like I said, but, you, I mean, if you really love it, you know, I mean, it's not hard work.
Right.
You know? And, I mean, I'm sure you have people that come in all the time, the residual customers, they love your product, they're telling all their friends, and you're growing and growing. But congratulations. Email address, what are, somebody wants to know about you, where do they go?
Yeah, so they can go to notefragrances.com, that's our website. You'll find everything there. If you're into social media, certainly follow us on Facebook or Instagram. Each location has its own Instagram and Facebook page, so the Scranton location is just Note Fragrances, the Clark Summit is fragrance, the Clark Summit location is Note Clark Summit. So, you can follow us there, or simply just come and visit us. Check it out, it's really cool, it's an awesome experience, and we'll be happy to show you what we're, what we got.
What's your phone number?
Phone number is 343-2100 for Scranton, and 319-1111 for Clark Summit.
Congratulations, Danielle, Mark.
Thank you.
It's great, we're happy to hear.
Thank you.
Because we always think about Main Street business and, you know, the private sector, and it matters to the community. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cummings?
Today, the certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Note Fragrances in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 22nd day of August 2018, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up.
Thank you.
That is a great story.
It is. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. That is a great story.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Christian.
Really very inspirational to talk about young people in the area.
Yeah.
All right, guys, here we go. Smile, one, two, three, two, three, two, three, four, one, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am definitely gonna see your shot.
Yeah, please, come down anytime. Love to, I mean, love to show you what we do, it's really unique.
That's fine, you can know where we are. I love it, I love it, love it, love it.
Well, thank you so much.
Absolutely, congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you own your own building or something that we can?
That's our next step, so.
Office of economic redevelopment, trying to help you with some stuff, okay?
Great, thank you so much.
Any real businesses?
Yeah, we appreciate it. All right, thank you so much.
Say Carrie Anderson.
What's that?
Carrie Anderson.
What a great story. I love that story.
Yeah, that's a good story. They're a small business.
Oh, my gosh, 20, 22.
Yeah, 22 years old, Danielle Company, that's funny.
Awesome.
Great job. 18-0175, good works in Lackawanna County, certificate for Andy Chompco for his participation in the 3rd Annual Fight for Vets Box Car Brawl Amateur Boxing Card, held on August 31st at the Radisson. Andy, Doug, like to come up to the podium, let's, let's talk about what's going on. This is the 3rd future fight that you're putting on, Fight for Vets, service dogs in the past, helping vets that come back that need that extra little help, and just being there for the community, and being a veteran yourself with, how many tours, 3 tours, 4 tours?
4.
4 tours, and understanding what vets really need, and like you said, it's, it really matters to all of us, and we're just happy to have you here. Talk to us about the, the brawl.
All right. Well, Fight for Vets is a nonprofit, Scranton-based, not-for-profit organization, and what we try to do is raise funds for veterans, our local veterans and veteran organizations locally. A couple of us sat down, 2015, and we started talking about raising money for local veterans. You heard a lot of stuff nationwide about big not-for-profits, that people were taking, taking large sums of money, and we said, well, how come we never see any of that money coming back to our area? And we started in 2015, and we linked up with Doug and Long Productions, and we put on Scranton's first outdoor boxing match since like 1986 at the Vault and, Vault and Tap Kitchen in West Scranton. We raised over $10,000, and we donated all that to the Geno Merly Center. After that, we did a couple other fundraisers on top of the parking garage at the Mall of Steamtown, and what we've been doing is to fill the gap where the VA and other local governmental veteran administration things can't fill. We have paid for a stairlift for a Vietnam veteran who couldn't go to the 2nd floor of his home because of Agent, the effects of Agent Orange. So, we got in touch with a couple different people, and we installed a chairlift for him. We paid off another man's truck who fell on hard times, we paid utility bills for people. We, last year, we sponsored a service dog for a veteran from the Milford area, and this year, we have the honor and opportunity to sponsor and pay for the first year of training for a service dog, and we're hoping to name it after a local hometown hero. So, when this dog is presented to its veteran, they will have something from Scranton, and saying, hey, people in Scranton do care, and, you know, we're here to help.
Great. It's gonna be a great Saturday night.
It's gonna be awesome. August 31st, 7 o'clock is the first bout, doors open at 5:00, and it's gonna be a great time.
And as I know the first two are great, I'm sure the 3rd will even be better than the first two.
Yes, sir.
Doug, you wanna talk a little bit about the promotion part?
Yeah, I just wanna add, thank you for the platform, Commissioners, for bringing boxing and creating the Fight for Vets. Again, thank our vets for tours. When we say, what they explained to me and what happened last year, is with the service dog, the family called us back, and that dog changed the whole dynamics of the family. You know, he was suffering, and that dog completed their house twofolds differently. So, I was convinced this year that let's go with the service dog routine, 'cause that dog is changing the lives of the children in the house, the husband, the wife, the relationship. And I asked Andy, could we do the dog again? It's not just doing a puppy, it's $5,000 and $5,000 to train the dog, very expensive. But they matched the puppy to the vet, that what his needs are is the way the dog is trained. It could be different needs for a different vet, so that puppy's trained to that vet. So, that's the route we're taking, and that's, I think, our best charity for Scranton.
I think it's a great charity, and a, a dog brings a lot of love into the house.
Yes, especially a train, and it, and it changes dynamics. The husband changed right around. Okay, the show.
Let's talk about the fights, how many fights?
Well, the fights has been on my bucket list, I guess, before I retire, is the train station canopy is the first ever history in boxing. Let's just talk about Lackawanna County and boxing. I'm doing it 35 years now, and never have we had a canopy for a rain, what's up, sir? We've never had a canopy for a rain show or an outdoor show. If you know the Jazz Festival, it's gonna be the most unique setting for Labor Day weekend to add to the Scranton area, is an outdoor show with fancy lighting out in the train station shed, it overlooks the whole concept of the horizon of the city while the fights are going on. It is unique. I've had it on my bucket list for years to do it at the train station canopy, and it's Friday night, and it's, the logistics are enormous, there's generators being brought in, proto-johns, chairs, everything has to be brought in from the outside vendors, just like the Jazz Festival. It is unique, Pat, if somebody walks over there and sees the live boxing, you could see it from the sidewalk or anywhere in the city looking over, it is gonna be wild. For the city of Scranton and have another concept for visitors to come in, they can eat at the Italian Festival and go over and watch live fights, box car brawl is cool for the city. It's something that's gonna be unique.
Let's talk about the fights. Amateur boxing.
Yeah.
They come out, lots of punches thrown, and blood, sweat, tears, there's everything. My father used to say, the late Paul O'Malley, say the essence of boxing was amateur boxing, fighting your heart out for a medal or a trophy.
Yeah.
We, we have a lot of great fights that are gonna happen that night, 'cause we gotta, the crowd's gotta come out, it's about coming out to see great boxing matches.
Oh, it's absolutely great boxing, and it's amateur boxing with the headgear, and it's 18 fights, and a lot of our new youth we have at the Irish Boxing Club, that again, that's a charity place, a volunteer place, a lot of exciting fighters last night, a couple new kids coming from school, you know, learning. We have Nick from Old Forge coming, he's 3-0, but it's a lot. And the new division that's starting for boxing, and I'll disclose with this, is the Masters, 39 to 70 years old, they fight 3 one-minute rounds.
39 to 70.
There's people flying into the airport of Oka from Ohio, a doctor's coming in to fight one of our local masters. It's the only regulated by the state in USA Boxing.
Is that doctor gonna like, is he gonna check the fighters out beforehand?
Yeah, right.
Just wanna make sure.
There's 5 masters fights.
Doctors are physical beforehand, you know?
Well, you know, the Masters Division, they sell a lot, it's an uncle or aunt that's excited, it brings a lot. Like, right now, we have 425 tickets pre-sold, it's already hitting, it'll hit the 1,000 mark for this facility.
It's amazing, like with George Foreman and all the other older fighters that lasted in their 40s, that, you know, I'm sure that's pushed a lot of that forward.
And also, though, with the sponsorship money, corporate sponsors in Lackawanna County, I wanna let them know there's 22 corporate sponsors, 22, and it keeps the price of the tickets down, 'cause I want family to come, a whole family of 4, 25 dollars for a ticket for a big production like this is fantastic for our area.
That is.
It really makes it affordable for everybody to come and see the most unique boxing in the city.
It's a great weekend, Labor Day weekend, great weekend.
It is.
Go over to the Italian Festival or something, eat and come out over to the fights.
Right, and it's Friday night, I wish I had Saturday, but wedding's overseeing me, there's a lot of weddings, I guess, Saturday night in Scranton. So, Friday night, August 31st, you can get tickets at the Radisson or at Weston Field. And again, to the public, thank you so much for the Commissioners, we have a great event for a great cause, with a lot of corporate sponsors, everybody's buzzing about it in the area, and I'm sure you'll see the most unique boxing at the train station shed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Andy, would you step back over to the podium for a second? Andy, I'd like to thank you for what you came forward to do, because like you said, the big thing was, okay, some of these other bigger organizations, there might be a dollar they get, how much is that actually going directly back to the vet? You're making sure that just about all of it, or all of it, or whatever is going straight back to the vet. That really matters. And that little in-between part, that's between, you know, I mean, maybe our county veterans and the VA or whatever, that's, that's the part where the shortfall is, and that's, and you're still on the plate, you, you don't have to do this. You served your country 4 tours, you know, and your dad, you know, I mean, we read your dad's profile off, 3 tours in Vietnam, you know? You, you served your country, but you, you feel so much for the, your fellow veterans and making sure that they're getting that little bit that they may be lacking, and they thank the 2 of you and your team that you put together to make these fights possible. And, you know, congratulations and good luck, this is gonna be great.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioners. It's, it's not just myself, we have a whole team, there's 4 of us that are very active and we're evolving, and if anyone in this room wants to help us out and come to any of our meetings, reach out to us. We're always looking for help, we want new ideas where we can help other people. It's about helping our communities, and if we forget that and lose track of that, I don't know where we're gonna be heading.
We wouldn't be sitting here today if it wasn't for veterans. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, that goes without saying, I think all of us up here feel the same, and thank you so much for your service. Thank you, Dad, for your service, and I like your tie, by the way, very nice. You know, what Doug was saying about the, the pets, the dog therapy is, is really wonderful for all patients, and I'm, I'm glad that you're using that service for veterans, because he's correct, they really are a wonderful asset for people that are in need, and especially with seizure disorders and PTSD, I mean, they do a great job. Dogs can hone in on what's gonna happen next, and they know it, and they just have that sixth sense, so.
They do.
It's, it's an excellent program, so thank you for that. I do have a question, I have a home health company privately, and a lot of our patients, when they pass away, they, they wanna donate their equipment. Do you take those donations? Because we're always looking for somewhere, some of them are brand new, or do you not do that?
We don't yet, we can in the future, but right now, we are not equipped for anything like that, we're just kinda raising funds at the, at this time, we'll see where the, where the future goes.
You see a lot of that out there, I see a lot of stuff, that's true.
I can tell you, yeah, there's, there's a lot of home health agencies that would be able to provide the vets with equipment, some of it basically brand new. I, I mean, especially with some of our patients that are in hospice or things like that, so, you know, I'll, if you can leave your card for me, I'll make sure that, 'cause I actually have some stuff now that I can actually donate to you guys if any days in need.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it, we appreciate it.
I'll hold it, you know, I hold it, and then if you ever find a vet that needs it, let me know, and.
Will do.
We can hand it over to you. But again, thank you so much for all you're doing, and I'm hoping to get a picture of me and one of these guys boxing up there before the event starts, so let me know. I think the Scranton Times did a good one with me and Jerry one time, didn't they, with our faces staring at each other? That was pretty cool.
Yeah, that was actually, that was actually, it wasn't a cartoon, that was a regular picture.
That was a regular picture of us, do you remember that?
That was a regular picture.
It was a nice picture. So, that would be interesting. So, thank you so much for your service, and thank you, Dad, appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Just thanks for your service, and keep up the good work, and I hope, I hope you guys make a, a lot of money on that night.
Yeah.
It works out real well for you.
I'd also, I'd also like to just congratulate Gene Reed and the Irish Boxing Club, 'cause I know a lot of the fighters that are gonna be on the card are from the Irish Boxing Club, and they do a great job, and they've been doing this since the, Jesus, 1980s, so congratulations to Gene Reed and the Irish Boxing Club. Andy, would you guys like to come forward?
Sure.
Certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Andy Chompco for Fight for Vets, in honoring of achieving a designation of recognize Andy Chompco for Fight for Vets and Honoring of Achieving a Designation of an Organization Providing Great Works in Lackawanna County.
Yeah, definitely. I'll give you my card.
Thank you.
I really do like that.
Sup, Andy? Eddie, what are you doing? I was exonerated yesterday.
Still working on it, right? Keep your mouth shut.
Thank you.
Take care.
I'll give you my card. Yeah, and give me a call, let me know if, if you have any veterans that are...
I do.
I actually have a...
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, for the viewing audience, uh, that's Friday, August thirty-first, seven o'clock, the fights start at the historical Radisson Hotel, so, you wanna see some great boxing matches, please come out on that Friday, and it's, uh, great to support our veterans in all different ways. Um, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Morning, Joan.
Good morning, Joan Hodeawan, it's, uh, two-twenty Linden Street, Scranton. Um, on current payables, I noticed on page twelve of the payment register, Myers, Brier, and Kelly, sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Is that in addition to our ongoing legal fees for, um, the prison issues?
It has to be, yeah.
So, what's our, what's our current total?
I'm not sure exactly, I can get that information for you.
Gary, do you have that or no?
Yeah, I think, um, with the sixty-four thousand on top of, uh, four hundred and sixty-eight, it should be five hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Okay.
Is that the end of the ones that are due?
Uh, there's a fourteen thousand that's in the system that we don't have yet, um, from another law.
These were done prior to us requesting you not do it unless the two commissioners agreed to it.
Yeah, so, that, that should be upcoming, um, fourteen thousand, I believe.
Uh, I noticed on August twenty-first, in the Times Tribune, um, an article, Prison Whistleblower Sues Over Termination. I suspect that we're gonna have more legal fees with this upcoming lawsuit, so that hasn't been factored in yet, it's too new, I'd assume.
That's not part, go ahead, do you wanna answer that, Tony?
That's not part of the A.D.'s investigation, that's a civil lawsuit that was brought by a guard, that would be covered by our insurance carrier.
Okay, so that's good. Um, item eighteen dash zero-one-six-nine, the DUI Sobriety Checkpoint Grant, who is the source of that grant money?
Uh, Jill Schultz is here, she'll actually explain that when she gets up.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, last, but, last but not least, eighteen dash zero-one-seven-six, uh, the lease agreement with the Scranton Lackawanna, uh, what is it?
Human Development.
Human Development Agency. Um, I'm all in favor of, uh, this agency, however, I was a little surprised as I read the backup. It looks like you're going to lease out seventy-five-hundred square feet of office space on the third level of the new government center, plus two thousand square feet of storage space in the basement. And, um, the first, uh, year, uh, first five years, uh, January first, nine, twenty-nineteen through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the rent will be seven thousand, eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month. Now, it sounds like a high figure, but when you look at, uh, the square footage that they're getting, plus the fact that it includes all utilities and janitorial services, it's really not that expensive. To give you a comparison, I'll be moving into Sampters hopefully at the end of the year. I got a tiny, tiny apartment, one bedroom, one bath, six hundred and forty-five square feet, and my first-year rent will be nine hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. So, you do the math.
Wow.
And, yes, and I also have to pay, you know, my electricity and so on and so forth.
Really?
But, what I'm saying is, uh, and I know most commercial spaces in the city, uh, are somewhat higher than what they are for residential rentals. So, my question is, who came up with these figures in this, um, list through twenty thousand forty-three, even though they do go up incrementally over the years? Who came up with these figures? Because I, I think if, I went looking for seventy-five-hundred square feet of office space somewhere in the city, I don't think I'd get it, and, and I don't have to pay any utilities or janitorial services, uh, and throw in two thousand feet of, um, square feet of storage space in the basement, I don't think I'd get it for seven thousand dollars a month. So, I would just wanna know who came up with these figures. I'm all in favor of you bringing in any revenue by leasing space that you don't need in that building, that's fine, and this is a legitimate agency, but I'm just wondering, you know, if that agency had to go on the commercial market, what would they be paying? So, who determined this and why? And are you gonna be finding other leases for unused office space in that building? Because it's a big building.
Yes, we are.
It's probably more than what you need. That's all I have on the agenda, I'll be back up at the end.
Thanks, Joan.
Sam, do you wanna explain, where do they come up with the equation? What, what were you paying on per square foot for your current building?
Um, I don't have the exact figures, uh, per square foot now, but it was in the vicinity of what, uh, uh, we're asking for, uh, in the lease, and the figures were...
And you partner with, we're partners with the county all the time, right?
Right. We, we run programs, uh, for the county, um, and we're in a situation where the services we provide, such as Head Start and our weatherization services, if our lease is, uh, exorbitant, that gets charged off to the customers, we can only, uh, spend so much on the house.
So, there's only so many people, you can help with their boiler, or their roof, or their windows, stuff like that?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, you're basically helping the people that don't have the finances to help themselves.
Exactly. Uh, the more, uh, we can save on the, uh, overhead expenses, the more we could put into the homes, the more children we could serve in the Head Start program.
I'd like to thank you for the partnership with the county.
Yeah, it's been terrific over the years, and we appreciate that, too.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Resolutions, eighteen dash zero-one-seven-one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables, Lackawanna County General Fund numbers two-six-seven-nine-three-eight through two-six-eight-eight-five-five-five inclusive, totaling two million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-six cents. An electronic fund transfer is including all payroll accounts totaling three million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Gary, is everything, everything good to go?
Yes, all invoices are in order, commissioners, and I'm holding the one invoice that we discussed earlier, you know, pending approval, uh, today.
Okay. That's the, uh, one for the, for the ding-balls.
Oh, okay.
Okay, does the board have any other questions for Mr. DiBello? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Yes. Eighteen dash zero-one-six-nine.
Thank you, commissioners. Thanks, sorry, thank you, commissioner, this is a resolution approving a DUI sobriety checkpoint grant, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the submission of a DUI sobriety checkpoint grant for the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office. The grant is to cover fiscal year two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty, at a total of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and here to speak to the board on this is Jill Schultz, the District Attorney's Grant Coordinator.
Jill, would you like to answer the question that, um, we had from Joan?
Joan, can you re- repeat your question exactly?
What is the source of the grant money?
We get the, it's from Penn Dott, which is the state of Pennsylvania.
And this is annual?
This is annual, and this year, it's for the two years, like we mentioned.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and it's for a hundred and twenty thousand, so it will be covering all of our overtime for our officers who go out and do roving patrols, cops and chops, and sobriety checkpoints. And it will also cover any of our attorneys that work the sobriety checkpoints overtime.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Jill? Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Keeping the road safe, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion approving the DUI sobriety checkpoint grant, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Eighteen dash zero-one-seven-zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution approving the arts and culture grants, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award arts and culture mini-grants of five hundred dollars each for the following community organizations. Archibald Borough Annual Harvest Festival on September twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, Pleasant Borough Family Fun Day and Pig in the Park Concert and Pig Roast, Newton Township Intro to Jazz Hip-Hop Dance Class for Kids Ages eight to eleven, and the Waverly Township Community Square Fair. And here to speak to the commissioners on this is Deputy Director for Arts and Cultures, Maureen McWhiggan.
Good morning, Maureen.
Good morning, how are you, commissioners? Thank you. Uh, this is just, you've seen me up here before, our rolling grant program for municipalities so that they can do community arts events, um, so this is just the next round that came in for this year.
Okay.
They can apply for up to five hundred or a joint grant for a thousand.
Nice. Okay, does the board have any questions for Ms. McWhiggan?
I just have a question on the Newton Township one. Do you know when that event is gonna be, or what, how they're doing that?
Sure. Um, the Newton, Newton Township's receiving funding for a hip-hop dance class for eight to eleven-years-olds. Uh, the first one, uh, they'll both be held on Saturday, sorry, it looks like there's two different age groups, on Saturday, October twentieth, from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty.
I, I just wanna, are, is the public able to go to that?
Oh, yeah, anybody can go. Anybody can go to all of these, we, that's what the, yeah, they're all public. You'd, you'd have to sign up, I think, by contacting Newton, but I can, if anybody wants information, I can send you the, the township, uh, they're partnering with the Recreation Center there, so...
Like, ninety-nine percent of them are all, like, they're, everybody's...
Oh, they have, yeah, they have to be public.
I've been to Archibald where they have the little band and the little...
Yeah. Because it's our funded tax dollars, we, everything has to be open to the public, anybody can go, and both these and the project grants, so...
Yeah, well, you know, I, I have a passion for the ballroom dance, so that's why I wanna go.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll get you the information, yeah.
Yes, I do have a passion for the arts.
She does.
Thank you.
Oh, you should, there's a swing dancing thing going on, I should get you that information, too. Yeah, there's a group that's swing dancing, that does a lot of work.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. McWhiggan? Okay, can I have, okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the arts and culture grant, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Eighteen dash zero-one-seven-two.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, your resolution entering into a contingency fee agreement, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into contingency fee agreement with Attorney Thomas W. Monley for representation in the County of Lackawanna versus Verizon, AT&amp;T, Comcast, and all. Here to address the board on this matter is Attorney Tom Monley.
I'd just like to open this up for a second. This is, um, this amazed me, actually, the background on this situation, which we're gonna talk about. Um, all of us see on your phone bill, you see like the nine-one-one service on, on our phone bill, we all have it. What was going on was, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of telecommunications companies, what they were doing was, they were turning around and dealing with the different businesses, and they would just get rid of that service charge, just do it as a savings for the businesses. And it's been going on for years and years. And what happened was, there's this guy down in Georgia, and he actually was calling them about his own private business, basically. And when they were trying to court him into going with their telecommunications company, they said, "Oh, we could get rid of that nine-one-one service charge." They didn't realize that he also was a county employee, and he went back and basically said, "Look," he goes, "Oh, there's a lot of money that's out here, that they must be doing this all across the country." So, it's been going, it's been going on, there's been these big, big lawsuits out in the Midwest, and I started to read a little bit about it, but then when I heard that Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, actually was filing, and I think it's like, it's like, it's like, like over thirty million dollars in lost funds that they didn't receive through all these years. I thought, "Oh, my God," like, you know what I mean, our first and foremost priority to our two hundred and fourteen thousand citizens is to make sure that our nine-one-one services, or better known as emergency services, has all the money it possibly can to make them fast, God bless you, effective, efficient, because seconds count when the police, fire, EMTs, whatever your emergencies are, they have to be there quickly, and they have to be there on time. And it bothered me to know that this was basically a mechanism or a tool to court businesses. They weren't going after the regular people, they weren't going after me, or Commissioner Cummings, or Commissioner O'Terriani, they were going after the businesses. So, at this time, we're gonna have Mr. Monley say a few words about the lawsuits and stuff. We, we discussed this at a work session, and we wanna bring him in to talk a little bit more about it, that we feel that there's, there may be a lot of money that was lost for Lackawanna County and our emergency services, and it should be recouped on behalf of our citizens, because their lives matter, and that's what we're here for, and our emergency services are second to none. I'd like to thank them for the great week they had this past week with all the rain and the calls that they received. Attorney Monley?
To piggyback off what Commissioner O'Malley said, that's true, this was, uh, big corporations, I think, being greedy and putting our community, the safety of our, uh, residents and children at risk by being greedy. And we found out through research and, uh, that in Delaware County, there was thirty-eight to forty-two million dollars lost in these assessments.
It's amazing.
Through the research we did, uh, on our population base in Lackawanna and Luzerne County, it is estimated that our county could have lost up to about ten million dollars, and Luzerne County, based on, uh, population base, could have lost up to, lost up to fifteen million dollars. So, our, my firm and myself are trying to recoup that money for our county, again, because we wanna put this money back, give this money back to the county, and help these nine-one-one centers. And, again, it's, it's really, really a terrible thing what they did. Verizon, AT&amp;T, Comcast, uh, companies that are probably worth billions of dollars, are not giving counties the money to help their citizens in these nine-one-one centers, and I think they got caught red-handed.
And these are trusted companies, you know, people trust these providers.
When you see, when you see, uh, the complaints in other counties, three that come right off the top, Verizon, Comcast, AT&amp;T, everyone has Verizon, Comcast, and AT&amp;T. So, hopefully, this is something that we can, uh, I, myself and, you know, other, other attorneys can help the county recoup the money and, uh, give it back to the county and the residents.
Okay. Does the board...
Additionally, commissioner, this would reimburse the county, when we did not receive those funds, of course, that we're entitled to, the county had to tip into its general fund to continue operations and updates.
Yeah.
At nine-one-one. Twenty money we recovered will go back to the general fund to reimburse the county for those expenses that we paid out over the last however many years that is going on.
I couldn't believe when I was reading it that this was the type of things that were going on, and so we wanted to bring Mr. Monley in at a work session to move forward, so...
And I also wanted, uh, to say that this is at no cost to the county, if this lawsuit is unsuccessful or doesn't work, the county has no financial obligations whatsoever. Those will be funded by me and the lawyers that we work with, so there's no risk whatsoever for the county for any, any money at all.
Yeah, that's correct, this is a, this is a standard contingency fee agreement, commissioner, so it doesn't cost the county any money. He up-fronts any expenses, discovery expenses, deposition expenses, and whatever other...
Which we know is very, 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 very costly.
And then at the end of the day, if he is successful in recovering money, he would get a contingency fee on that basis, that's all.
Sure. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Monley, Attorney Monley? I'd like to make a motion entering into a contingent, contingency fee agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, anybody? Nothing? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Attorney Monley, thanks for coming in today.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, for all the work you did on this, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Eighteen dash zero-one-seven-six.
Thank you, commissioner, entering into a lease agreement with the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency for seven thousand five hundred square feet of office space on the third level and two thousand square feet of storage space in the basement of the building located at one-two-three Wyoming Avenue, Scranton. Lease to commence January first, twenty nineteen, and expire on December thirty-first, twenty forty-four. Uh, commissioner, I would just like to address before that the, uh, this lease was negotiated between SLHDA and the county based upon what they're currently paying. Uh, could we have asked for more money? Yeah, we probably could have, but as Sam has indicated, you, that would have taken money away from programs and services that are provided to the residents of Lackawanna County, which are valuable services to the residents of Lackawanna County. Uh, additionally, as regards to leasing that other space in the building, there is no other space in the building, it was always planned that SLHDA would come into the building from the beginning.
This didn't just show up, this was part of the original plan, everything else.
Because we were, the, the money, it was going elsewhere, and we figured we can bring them in and capture that money back from the state, uh, as part of our, uh, program to have them within the county, but, uh, there is no additional space in the building to be leased.
And like you said, the big thing is, you know, we're talking about roofs and boilers and windows, these are things that people need to survive in their homes and keep their houses up to date, you know, so, Sam, would you like to come in?
Uh, yeah, thank you again. Uh, the issue with our, our agency working with, uh, with the county is, uh, we deal with, um, almost every agency, uh, in the county, area agency on aging, and domestic relations, and, uh, children and youth, and, uh...
The partnerships are immense, they're all over the place.
Sure, sure. And, uh, basically, as I said before, if we could keep, uh, uh, the overhead down, uh, more services we can provide. Uh, we have been blending funds and working with, uh, economic development and, uh, being able to do more projects because we're, we're working together, and what better way to do it than being in the same, same building as we have been, it's been...
Same people, we're dealing with same people.
Fifty-three years, uh, that the agency has existed, has always been associated with, uh, with the county government, and we were in this building for, uh, so many years, and, uh, even prior when the, before the county moved the, uh, their offices to this building, Uh, we, uh, have been blending funds and working with, uh, economic development, and, uh, uh, being able to do more projects because we're, we're working together. And what better way to do it than being in the same, same building as we have been? It's been-
Same people, we're dealing with same people.
Fifty-three years, uh, that the agency has existed, has always been associated with, uh, with the county government, and we were in this building for, uh, so many years, and, uh, uh, even prior when the, before the county moved the, uh, their offices to this building, so. Uh, it's always worked out, uh, great for all of us, and again, the idea is to keep costs down, keep overhead down, and put it into the direct services to clients.
Beautiful. Uh, the board have any questions for?
I just have some comments. Um, Sam and I go back a long way. I don't know if you Commissioners know that. Um, I was, uh, utilized the services of Head Start for my twins when I was young in college, and, um, you know, he had me speak at one of his events recently, and, uh, when I thought about, when, when he asked me that, I thought back on what I was gonna say. Um, I was one of the Head Start moms that volunteered to be on, on the board, and you have a program for the parents there. And it was one of the first times I was ever involved in a board like that. So, um, I think that the work that you do is amazing, and it's, it's needed, and probably one of the reasons I'm sitting here today, because you gave me my first experience at that, um, as a volunteer, and as a Head Start mom. So, thank you so much for the work you do, and I really appreciate it. And as far as the rent for the globe goes, um, and for our Government Center, it's just one more great idea that came out of this great move that we made to move to the globe. Uh, it's just the best, uh, move we could have made, and I'm happy to have you be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tierney? No, I'm good. Okay. I'd just like to say that, you know, do me, uh, I'm not sure how many administrations want to consolidate county government under one roof. I think it goes back, back at least three, and, um, it's happening. It's gonna happen this year, and SLHDA is part of it, and they've always been part of the plan, and we're happy you're there with us because of the same people that we work for through Human Services, the same people that you work for to make sure they're warm, and their homes are livable, and that they can have a good life. So, thank you, Sam, and thank you for all the work that you've done through the decades. And actually, it's, Commissioner Cummings has been a factor of what the program is, so, that's really good.
For my kids, I got to go to college, you watch my children, and I got to volunteer. I learned how to be a board member. I mean, it was, you do a lot, SLHDA is a huge program. Um, we serve on the board there, and, you know, I mean, how many people come into our meetings, like thirty, thirty-five?
Mm-hmm.
It's a huge, uh, program and a huge endeavor on your part, so, great job.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for everything you do to help us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and it's gonna be a pleasure for you to be under the same roof as us. I'd like to make a motion entering into a lease agreement, SLHDA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to-
Oh, yay.
Like to make a motion, eighteen dash zero one seven three.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a motion to authorize the Purchasing Department to advertise a request for proposal, RFP, for the sale of the Visitor's Center located on Montage. And here to address the board is Joe Wexler, our Director of Purchasing.
Joe, before you start, we're just gonna, we're gonna say a few words. Um, I'd like to just bring up that, uh, this is part of the, start of this administration from January two, two thousand sixteen forward. Um, the Visitor's Center is a beautiful building. Um, it's architecturally so incredible, and it just doesn't, it's horrible to say, it just doesn't fit any needs of county government. It just doesn't. It's not centrally located. It's, it's basically, it's, it's, it's off eighty-one, it's, but it's in a great situation on Montage Mountain, where we have the movie theaters, and baseball, and Montage Mountain, and, and movies, and restaurants, and stores, and just a lot of great opportunities. And this building is being underutilized. And also, with that being said, the Visitor's Center, and it's part of our plan, is that the Visitor's Center will be going to the gateway. So, that's where it's gonna be. It's currently housed in the electric building, and I think we have a small kiosk, actually, up at the Visitor's Center at this time. So, like, this was always part of the plan, and the big part of the plan is this, is that just like our building, just like this building, we could have just turned around and sold this building, or, and I never even thought about this building until we got in the other building. What we said, Jesus, two and a half, two years and eight months ago, was that this, two years and like six months ago, this building would be sold before we got in, and that it would be on the tax roll. We could have sold this to some, a nonprofit. We made sure that this was earmarked to be back in the tax roll, just like the Visitor's Center is earmarked to be back in the tax roll. And we're not losing the Visitor's Center. It's gonna be in probably the, the best proximity it could possibly be. It's gonna be across the street from the historical Radisson Hotel, and right next to the Hilton Hotel.
That's right.
Which everybody could, coming to the community, could stop in, see what's going on in Lackawanna County, because there's a lot of great things to do here. The staff will be there, and I just think it's a great opportunity, and this is part of the whole consolidation process. We're consolidating, bringing everything in. If there was something we really could have used that building for, this board would absolutely did something with it, there really isn't, and we're gonna put it out there to be sold, but the big thing, I think, about the whole thing is, it's gonna be back in the tax roll. That's gonna be a, a big plus for us, and we get that back in tax roll. And we're making county government more efficient and effective. Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, it's, I just, um, so grateful for this opportunity, because I'll tell you, the consolidation efforts that we've been putting together as an administration are something that I was looking forward to and never thought that I would achieve. Um, so I'd like to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to be a part of that, because, um, we are making use of all of our, uh, assets and getting rid of those that aren't. And our Visitor's Center was, um, lacking visitors for, um-
Yes.
-so long because of where it's located. And now it'll be centrally located, and people will actually be able to see what we do there. And, um, I, I have to say, I've spoken to numerous people, and not many people even knew that we had a Visitor's Center there. They didn't know what that building was there. They thought it was just a daycare. So, um, I am thrilled, and I am excited to be a part of this. I look forward to, um, uh, getting this building into the hands of people that can utilize it in a better way. I look forward to the Visitor's Center moving into the Scranton region, where it'll get much more, uh, visibility and support, and you'll be able to see, um, the promotions, uh, that we do through there, and the work that they do much easier. Um, and I look forward to, uh, working more closely with them in promoting Lackawanna County, uh, the way it should have been to begin with. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you to the public for this opportunity, because it's a great, uh, great move. Uh, it's just something that I'm thrilled with, I can't say enough about. Thank you.
Commissioner Tierney?
It is a beautiful building, and it serves no useful purpose there currently. Uh, it, it's, uh, something we don't have any use for, and it is something we should try to see what we can do with. Thank you.
Um, I just believe that, just the foot traffic alone, and I want to just talk about the stuff that's in close proximity to the Radisson, with the Radisson, the Hilton's right there, so that'll be in between that. Then you have the historical Steam Town. We have our trolley museum, and we have so much stuff in Lackawanna County. They'll be able to, like, like, you could spend a week in Lackawanna County and do a little bit of everything, our mine tours, the, the State Coal Museum, uh, the Everhart Museum, the Masonic Temple for the shows, like, there's just so much I can go on and on for. And this will be stuff that we'll be able to really showcase-
Yeah.
-right in downtown Scranton.
Much better.
And, though, I really think the beaut, it's a beautiful building on Montage, but it was off, how do you say, it was off the beaten path-
It was.
-and it's kind of in the middle of nowhere, but it's absolutely somewhere for the people who have businesses and the entrepreneurs on Montage Mountain. But for us, the Visitor's Center, I think, would be better by our two closest and biggest hotels, so I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for all the citizens of our county. Mr. Wexler?
Yes, basically, today, what, uh, what we're considering is establishing the documents that will be used in terms of the solicitation for bids. Uh, and the highlights of that, as, as was touched on, uh, there will be a minimum bid requirement.
Proposals.
Proposals, I'm sorry. Proposals. And they're also, uh, as Commissioner O'Malley referenced, um, there's a caveat in here that the, a private entity that purchases the property, uh, will return it to the tax rolls, and also, there is an opportunity for nonprofits, uh, to bid on the property as well, if they pay the equivalent of the annual taxes on an ongoing basis to the-
With increases, if they wanted it. So, that's gonna be, they're getting, it's taxes, but they could say whatever it is, a gift or whatever, it goes with the increases. So, we're making sure of that. Like I said, most, most people in this situation might just be happy to sell the building. We gotta make sure that, uh, it goes back onto the tax roll in some capacity.
Yes. Uh, basically, the, the documents that we use, there was a, uh, there wasn't a, uh, an assessment of the property, um, conducted in the spring, that we'll be using for references for dollar values, uh, and, uh, we will get this prepared and gathered and out on the street as soon as possible.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions for Joe?
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the Purchase Department of Advertising for a request for proposals, RFQ, for the sale of the Visitor's Center. Do I have a second?
Absolutely, second.
Roll call.
Thrilled.
Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
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 Awesome.
Yeah, that's, that's a great start. Eighteen dash zero one seven seven.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to accept a quote for trolley car number seventy-six wheel axle overhaul by Truction Motor Service, at the amount of four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars each, for a total of seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And here to address the board on this is Wayne Hiller, our Director of the Trolley Museum.
Let's wa, let's talk about the devastation of rain.
Yeah, we were, uh, we were hit pretty hard up there on the, uh, trolley line. On Monday and Tuesday of last week, uh, uh, we received, uh, a ton of rain coming down, and what happened, uh, trees fell on the overhead wire, the track was washed out, and, uh, it was a lot of work. Uh, since then, on Monday and Tuesday, when it rained, the trees were removed on the overhead wires and the tracks on Wednesday and Thursday. Electrical company came in to adjust some of the poles and remove the wire, so the DL could come in and repair the washed-out tracks. And, uh, as of, uh, they worked Saturday and Sunday on it. Monday, the tracks are all repaired, and we have a call out to Vinult Electrical Company out in Philadelphia to come in and realign the, the poles and the tension of the wire. And, uh, unfortunately, they're busy. They promised possibly the end of this week, if not early next week, that we can be back in operation by, uh, Labor Day weekend, when Rail Fest, which is a really big weekend for us down at the-
Oh, it's a big weekend, um, down-
So, uh, you know, it looks optimistic, and a lot of folks, uh, really worked hard to get this operation back in motion again.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want everyone in the viewing audience to realize that this, that a lot of people don't realize that we have a trolley museum, and that we have trolley cars, and that, that they can actually travel on it. Was it, this is six mile?
Ten mile round-
Ten mile round trip.
Fully guided tour.
Fully guided tour, and then they do it around the holidays, they either have Santa Claus there, they do it during Halloween, they have, it's run all the time, and, and they have a real great opportunity, if you wanna really get back to the old times, you can go down, park your car, get in a trolley, and go up to a baseball game. You know, you know, it doesn't get any better than that.
We have a lot of special event, events, like you said, Commissioner. Uh, we have, uh, baseball, uh, baseball excursions, we have children's events, we've been, uh, we have Santa on the trolley, Easter Bunny on the trolley. We have a lot of events for folks, and it's, uh, it's, it's really popular, and we expect, we're projecting over-
Yeah, birthday parties are, don't, yeah, birthday parties. So, anybody has a birthday party?
We have a back room that we're allowed to, folks, to, uh, rent out the back room. We give them a package deal with the museum and a trolley ride. We're expecting over forty thousand people to enter the doors.
And this is like, what, you moved up, like, was like five thousand difference between now and last year or something, or you're-
Correct. Last year, we had around thirty-six thousand, and that was a big increase from the year prior, and, uh, like I say, we're on projection of over forty thousand this year.
It is. It's a, it's a, the trolley museum's great.
I'll tell you.
You got a question?
Um, out of all of the events that we hold, I think this is one of the biggest events that we have at the county, I really do. I, I, I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and-
Thank you.
Um, when I saw the pictures that, that you had sent in, I think, do you wanna-
I'm gonna pull them up.
Yeah, um, I don't know if Joe can, I mean, we just, we just got those lines repaired.
Brand-new lines.
And-
Over the, we, several months ago, we had, and it was the first time we addressed the, the lines since we opened up in nine, nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, we, we, uh, the tension of the wires-
A lot of time, we got, twenty-eight years off, twenty-nine years.
It was the first time we sunk money into the lines, and, uh, unfortunately, this had to happen. But, uh, like I say, it's very optimistic that we should be up and running by Labor Day, if not sooner.
Definitely, we need it for next week.
Yes.
And, you know-
It's a big revenue week for us.
Well, and it's a great thing for the kids, and, you know, it's, it's just a really great program that we have, and I appreciate all your work in that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Commissioners, just so you know too, the damage to the lines has been submitted to our insurance carrier for-
Absolutely. Brand-new, yeah.
We, we just had them, we done that, well, last year was a-
Yes.
Yeah, recently. Thank you so much.
Now, a job well done. Commissioner Tierney?
No, I, John, you, Wayne, you've done a great job, and it's, um, looking for new wheels to keep them on the track better, and-
Yeah, absolutely.
Pretty simple, pretty straightforward.
Don't you have any other, Commissioner, don't you have any other-
It's great to talk about the great things that go on in Lackawanna County, and there's so many great things that we could talk about here. We can go on forever. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, basically, uh, we received three quotes, and this is to replace the worn, narrow-profiled wheels on car seventy-six, which is our main workhorse car, and, uh, right now, the car is out of commission for safety reasons, because of these wheels being worn. Uh, this car is our only car that, uh, accommodates handicap folks. We, uh, revised the, uh, the, the entrance of the, uh, trolley to allow wheelchairs in the car, and actually, I, since the car's been down, I had four groups, uh, with, uh, handicap folks, uh, we had, they declined because of the, uh, we couldn't accommodate them. So, uh, uh, I'd like to, uh, accept the quote for, uh, Truction Motor Company, which is out of Pittsburgh. They were the lowest quote, and they're a reliable company that provides quality work to replace the, uh, the wheels on car seventy-six and get it up running again, because we only have one operating car, car eighty, and if that goes out of, uh, commission, then we're down, so, I'd like to-
And Commissioners, you have another one on the way that's being, uh-
We have several cars.
You have a few that are being rebuilt right now, right?
Yes, we're, we're in the, uh, process of restoring several cars. Scranton car, Scranton car three twenty-four, and another Scranton car, car five oh five.
Commissioner, the, the bid itself is under twenty thousand dollars, so it falls within the requirements of the County Co., that we received three quotes, which we did, so we're-
Good. You know, I, I just want to bring up that, you know, our, our county, like, in general, like, like, we have our Disabilities Actions Committee, and they actually, that had been around for years, and this board, in two thousand sixteen, revitalized it, set up meetings, and brought up, we have a great board, Keith Williams, we've got a lot of great people on the board. Like, they actually go, and we had them go through the globe to make sure that, we were making sure that everybody who lives on a same playing field, a level playing field, like, like, I grew up in the seventies, and everybody used to rumor, rumor these days, there wasn't even curb cuts in the city of Scranton. And I was there when they actually got an elevator that would go to the second floor of the Albright Memorial Library, and there was people, like Keith Williams, just said to me, I had never been up here in my life. And this is to make sure that all of our citizens can have accessibility to everything that we have here, even our playgrounds, our boundless playgrounds, we're at the forefront of that. No one else has that in Lackawanna County. We have boundless playgrounds to make sure all of our children can go out and play equally with everybody else. But also to have a trolley that we can get anyone that needs to go on. I think the excursions are fabulous, and I'd just like to thank you for the great job that you do all the time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the quote for the trolley car seventy-six wheel and axle overhaul by Truction Motor Services, four thou, four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars each, for a total of seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tierney?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and see you at Rail Fest.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Hey, Bob, how are you?
Well, hanging in there, Commissioner. Uh, I'd like to start off with a couple things here. It's been a while since I've been here, but, uh-
Feeling better, Bob?
I'm getting there.
Yeah.
Working on it.
Good.
Uh, you know, with Commissioner Cummings and the drugs and the stuff like that, there's just the thing in the news the other day, where a guy was convicted of, uh, driving high, so to speak, with marijuana, killed a couple people in a boat. You know, I've seen this over the years, in the fifty-six years I've been into towing and recovery, and the things we've seen out there, it's not just DUI drivers, it's people on drugs and all, and people don't seem to understand, you know, I've traveled all over the world, I've had offices in different parts of this world. We have better chemists in the illegal field that'll take any of the opiates or anything that you got in the market and create something. They use the lamb-based coke, or heroin, or do anything they needed to do, and it's a serious issue, and we're ignoring it. And it's a serious issue and we're ignoring it. Yeah, we're growing plants and we're using it. I understand the medical field and I understand all that. Somebody takes their medicine, use the drugs, has a drink, gets in their car, heads down the road and we have an issue. Or they hurt someone else in other ways. So, I think it's something, and I support you a thousand percent on it.
Thank you, Ben.
Uh, I know you've been criticized and knocked and I've heard people say, well, you know, when I was in college, I got high, I smoked and look at me today and all. But what about the kids growing up today and a different type of drug than you smoked and than what you did when you were in school? And the people, uh-
Not the same marijuana, but-
No, it's, it's not. And that's the issue.
Yeah.
These people are creators. They're better chemists than anybody you're gonna find at a college, a school or anything else. And look at the people in that park the other day, dying and going crazy over the drugs that they're taking. So-
Yeah, that was horrendous. I heard about that.
We need to really pay serious attention. And I hope you get the support you need. I really do.
I have lots of support.
And I hope people continue to understand, uh, where we are today is not where we used to be. Uh, we have to lock our doors now. You can't leave your car anywhere else. We have criminals walking the street. We have politicians who wanna make sanctuary cities legal.
Yeah.
And I've been around the country, uh, a while ago, so I've been seeing a lot more that's been going on than we see right here in Scranton, but it's coming. And it's sad to see, as Pat was talking, how Lackawanna County used to be the trolleys. Remember when I was a child, I used to ride the street cars? You know, and, uh, the history we had and the things, we don't have it anymore and we're losing it. And, uh, we're losing it because we're letting people in here who have no damn business coming in this country. And that's the problem we have. We're going their way, not the way we should be going. So, we all gotta take a serious look and, uh, get our head out of the sand. This is our county, this is our town, and we better do something to protect it. Because I don't want illegals here anymore than anybody else. And we had our buddies here, uh, that put tours in Vietnam, fellow veterans. And one of the things, uh, Lauren, that you brought up, and I mentioned it to them, um, when Andy was leaving, that if you have something, because they don't have storage facilities or anything else like that, we'll give you facilities to store stuff for them to sell. I'll give you storage trailers, I'll give you the facility that you could park the stuff at.
Thank you.
And then we'll help them liquidate it and, uh, put the money to our vets who are more deserving than a lot of people in this country right now. So-
Do you want some of that conversation? Yeah.
If you wanna go that route, uh, I told Andy, uh, there's no question we'll be there to help them.
Thank you.
We're already, as you know, I've been very involved in the PTSD. I've been working, we'll do, uh, Barlett on it right now and, uh, we're getting some things done. But the forgotten aren't gonna be the forgotten anymore and that's where we need to be. You know, I'm tired of listening to politicians talking about this and that and forgetting, uh, if it wasn't for the people in uniform, we, none of us would be in here today.
That's true.
And, uh, we've turned a blind eye and it's time to get off our butts and do something about it. And, uh, I'll do whatever I can to help them and they know that. I've been doing enough with them already. So, that opportunity's out there. So, whatever you have, just contact us and, uh, we'll pick it up, we'll do whatever it is and, uh, we'll help them get rid of it wherever, uh, they wanna store it. Moving on to, uh, one of the other things, Joe Joyce, and I'll tell you, I'm really disgusted with, uh, what's been going on. You take Joe Joyce, you had the dictator Kolajewski here. I had a file to protect my property because they disobeyed you when you told them you cannot file on an individual on a property tax. Joyce advised the dictator Kolajewski to go ahead and do it and put my properties in a judicial sale while they're in litigation over the taxes. We had to put a thirteen bankruptcy to protect those properties and argue them now because of what they did. You cannot have Joyce sitting in the director's seat and then saying, I'm gonna send it over to the lawyer to litigate it when it's filling his pot. You're putting the fox in the hen house. It's totally a major conflict of interest. He'll just look at any way he can to send that money from here to there because he's wearing two hats and he benefits out of both of them. And you can't have him force you into a litigation to fill his coffers. Let's hire a director, let the director be for the people. That's what we're about. I went to the Board of Assessments with properties the other day. I was given a property by Gertrude Hawks that abuts one of my properties in Troop, a little piece of land for a dollar. Ridiculous assessment was put on it. It was a dollar. The church at Holy Cross that I bought, to preserve our culture, as you were saying, Pat, this is Lackawanna County. We have a culture here that was built by our legal immigrants. Everybody that came here worked, respected the flag, respected the country, respected the opportunity. I bought that church and the hall to preserve a place for the kids to play basketball. The church is tied to it, yet I got assessed where I owe fifty thousand dollars in taxes on that building and I paid thirty-five thousand for it. Was it worth thirty-five? To me, as part of our culture, you're damn well right it was. To the city of Scranton, I was buying it for a dollar. A magistrate here, magistrate judge, had a deed already in his drawer for two dollars for the hall, already executed by the diocese, waiting for the church to get torn down and a parking lot paved. And then he was gonna put his two-dollar deed in. They sold me everything completely. He tried to get me to give him that property and I wouldn't do it because I don't like deception. I don't like mistrust. I refuse and I have it, but it's all tied in to the nonprofit, to the hall, get them taxed on it. Yet, when it comes, and there were other properties we brought in, so look, this one has a wetland on it, this one has, the old sports dome up in Jessup, we're not gonna do anything with it. Got a ridiculous assessment on it and wouldn't even consider it. So, these are things now I've gotta spend money to go to the Court of Common Pleas on. We gotta fight it and we gotta battle because it's wrong. Yet, when it comes to the mall in Scranton that should be paying a substantial damn tax, not based on three million or less assessment, we don't do nothing about it. The school board doesn't do a thing about it because they're bought off because they're inside the building. So, we're playing dirty politics, so to speak, that sometimes the stench in the politics and the political field is worse than you'll get out of a landfill or disorderity. And we've seen that and it's hurting our citizens. I'm about the people. I'm not about politicians. I'm not about anything else. I've always been about my city from day one. And I fought politicians here because of who they were and what they were about. And when I see what's going on with this type of assessment, we need to make changes. We don't need to spend our time in courtrooms. We don't need to keep spending tax dollars because of politics. Maybe so many people don't like the fact that I supported Trump or I've done different things. They don't like my political, uh, outlook. That's too bad. I respect my president. Everybody that's in a uniform, right here, you follow your president. That's what we're about. We're Americans and Americans first and we're not anybody else. And that's what's upset me. We gotta take the bull by the horn. We can't have illegal criminal immigrants coming to here. The next thing you're gonna have a sanctuary city by some of our politicians that are already supporting them throughout the state of Pennsylvania. We gotta pay attention because it's the future of our kids and the future of our senior citizens in this community that made this community what it is today are those people that we need to take care of and not keep raping them. Not let the school district keep taking them for a sleigh ride because they don't know how to run a business. Incompetence with educated people is a sad thing because there's no common sense. And, uh, you know, we just need to, uh, move forward. And I'm willing to help contribute whatever I have to our vets. We're still pushing PTSD, Pat. You can still be the forerunner on it. You know, uh, we could fix a streetcar. We could do other things. We could get funding to help our vets with PTSD. Because as I'm speaking here right now, someone's just blowing their brains out or committing suicide and dying. And we need to do something about it. And we have that opportunity because we have the will. And with the will, we could do anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Joan, you have flyers.
Yes, I do. I can't be here on September fifth. I'll be at the VA all day. So, uh, just give you a heads up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joan.
Next book sale by the Friends of the Scranton Public Library will be on September eleventh through the sixteenth, second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of the gym. And it's a great opportunity to buy quality books, paperbacks, hardcover, DVDs, CDs and audiobooks for one to two dollars apiece. Great bargain. Um, Lorraine, did you get the information on the Books by Mail program for the homebound that I brought up a couple weeks ago?
Yes, yes, I did.
Just so you know, um, that's a free service that we have a, uh, cooperative agreement with the postal service, uh, post office, uh, that anybody with a library card that's homebound, could be elderly, can be vision impaired, uh, could be somebody recovering from having both knees replaced, can't get to the library, as long as they have a library card and they send that library card into the library and we hold on to it. This is the, the package, the, the, that you could stuff all your CDs, DVDs and books into, goes postage-free to the, uh, resident, comes back postage-free.
Oh, my gosh. Isn't that amazing?
That's neat.
How did you get that?
Oh, we do wonderful things at the library. You know, and also it's a great cooperation with the, um, uh, post office that, uh, you know, that we, because the idea is to reach out to the residents and provide the services if they cannot come to the libraries.
That's amazing. Joe, did you hone in on that thing? Joe, could you hone in on that thing? That's amazing.
That's aside, so.
That's great.
Hold that up for a second. Is it, are you on? Okay, yeah, I wanted to go see that.
And they, they get to keep the-
It's for the elderly people. Some people can't get it, get to libraries.
Also, it could be a child that's homebound.
Yeah, anybody. That's great.
You know, for vision impaired, uh, residents, we have large print books. We have audiobooks. We have all kinds of things, so-
CDs, video.
Yeah. So, I sent you one of these, explains the program.
I didn't see that part, sorry.
Hopefully, people will take advantage of it. This is kinda things, you know, that, you know, all the fundraisers that the library does, like swinging on Vine and everything else, uh, is to maintain programs like this. And thank God, uh, the post office supports the program and does this postage-free.
That's awesome.
Um, also, um, I'd like to know, what is the status of the search for a permanent chief of staff?
Yeah, I'd like to know.
We're basically where we're at right now.
Okay, still looking? Do you have any applicants or looking for applicants?
We didn't even, we didn't put anything out there yet. We wanted to get a little bit of time between the first staff and, you know, moving forward. Uh, Mr. Frederickson is, excuse me, Attorney Frederickson has been in this position before and he's doing a great job at this point. So, we'll see in the future.
Oh, Joe's gone. I was gonna tell him. It's nice that he has an honest job now, but that's all right. Also, um-
I agree, Joan.
What, are you still, uh, vetting, uh, the possibility of privatizing the tax claim bureau or is that a dead issue?
I'll talk under Commissioner's business.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll tell you, I'm not. That'll just, that's all I have to say on that. I'm not.
Good afternoon. I'm Melissa Walshko-Williams, Madison Township.
Hi, Melissa.
I'm really sorry I missed the last meeting. I was otherwise occupied at our Board of Ed meeting.
Yeah, I'd have been close to you.
Yes. And on that subject, with the juvenile detention facility, uh, North Pocono taxpayers are kinda being, gonna be on the hook for educating these students. And, um, do you know how long the average stay for juvenile detainees are in the county?
For what? For what?
Their average stay in the juvenile detention facility when a child's adjudicated there?
There's, there's gonna be, there isn't a-
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but the place in Goldsboro is short-term, uh, holding. It's not, it's not locked. North Hampton County is the long-term, uh, care facility. The North Hampton, the one in Goldsboro is short-term.
And we've been using Goldsboro.
We have been using it.
So, it's not like we haven't been using them already.
We're actually using both facilities for different-
Yeah.
That's a question probably better addressed at the prison board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Board of Managers.
And, um, well, regarding transportation also, there are no bus routes that go up there. For families whose children are adjudicated there, will the county be making any special provisions to help them visit their children?
No. No, I'm not planning on it. Are you? It's not our job to transport people to visit their kids.
It would be up to the court, I believe, to have to arrange, if they wanna arrange for that.
Okay, 'cause the Covington Industrial Park's also on the way up there. And I have heard people living in Scranton without transportation expressing an interest in applying for jobs up at Amazon and different positions, but they have no transportation to get there.
They can buy a car.
Something for Colts. When you're in low social econ, socio-economic status, it's really hard to afford a car. You know, even middle-class people have difficulty keeping cars on the road.
We have Uber and, and all that now. It's really inexpensive with those Uber. And what was the other one?
I'll talk a little bit about it, Commissioner's business, about the Colts and stuff.
Okay, and ask this at the Board of Managers regarding the juvenile beds and things. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello. Uh, this afternoon, I, my name is Ann Tompkins. My husband Walter. We're from South Abington Township. And we are currently involved with, uh, what they're calling the Scranton Beltway.
Oh, yeah.
And I've heard, uh, Commissioner O'Malley say several times that, you know, you're here for the citizens of Lackawanna County.
Yep.
We're from Lackawanna County. We have been in touch with many, many people, politicians, uh, local, our local supervisors, the board. And we're just reaching out to you as citizens of Lackawanna County to, uh, maybe speak on our behalf or look into what's going on. They're building what they're calling the Scranton Beltway. And it, the purpose of this Beltway, from what we understand, is to get the congestion off of I-81 and use a turnpike instead. Now, we've talked to thousands of people that say they're not using the turnpike because of the tolls. The Turnpike Commission is, was asked by our, um, local supervisors and board to maybe lower the, or reduce the toll or get rid of the toll for a period of three to six months. We were told by the Turnpike Commission, that's not possible. They can't do that. So, what we're trying to do is, I just wanted to let you know, this affects, we've talked about veterans today. It affects our veterans, my husband. Uh, if, it affects senior citizens. We've lived in that development. It's a development, uh, right on eighty-one. We've lived in it for forty-one years. We have other pe, other people involved that have been three generations in their homes. Now, we've received letters of eminent domain-
Really?
-that are telling us we potentially may lose our homes. Now, this affects over, from fifty to a hundred families up in South Abington Township. Now, that's taxpayer dollars that are not, no longer gonna be collected by the township.
Get a copy of that letter from you?
I will. I will get it. I'll get it to you. We came here not knowing if we could even speak or whether we would be listened to. Uh, we've tried all avenues and we keep, and we're gonna, I said in the paper and it was quoted, I, we will go right down with the fight. We're not, we're not giving up. So, we're reaching out to anybody that could possibly help us with this. Um, we have information. We have actually a petition, online petition, that has over seventeen thousand, uh, signatures saying this should not happen. It should not happen to families that have raised their children in a development. It's a beautiful development up in South Abington Township. They intend to take, from what they have on their website, they intend to take a whole street of families plus on lower developments. So, it's affected a lot of families in Lackawanna County.
That's ridiculous.
And we're just here to, to get this out to our county commissioners to see what possible, you know, avenues you could suggest to us. Um, we've gone to Senator Blake, Senator Casey. Um, Representative Flynn is on our side. He's been trying to help us, um, make legislation to drop the tolls, which he, I think they're still working on. You know, so it's, um, affecting a lot of taxpayers and a lot of families in, in the community. And we're just reaching out to you to try to see if there's anywhere, any other suggestions you have that will, you know, help us with this fight.
Are, are they blaming the, the tolls for the reason for building this? Is that what there's, what is the purpose?
No. Their purpose is to get congestion off I-81 and get them to use the turnpike instead. And we've, we've had people that are in, um, logistics, in transportation, his-
They want us to give more money to the Turnpike Commission. Is that what they want us to do?
Yes, yes.
That's ridiculous. This is an outrage.
Commissioners, what I believe is, is-
And they're gonna take people's homes off them?
Yeah, they wanna create a connector. So, when you're coming down eighty-one, it will, right now, you have to get off and exit and get onto the turnpike. They wanna create a direct connector from eighty-one to the turnpike. But in order to do so, they have to, they're gonna condemn properties, make that connector, is what it is.
Well, if they did away with the tolls, they wouldn't have to build a highway with a connector. Is that basically-
Well, they still wouldn't have a direct connector. You would still have to get off and then get onto the turnpike through the center.
But still, it wouldn't affect all those people.
Well, if they can go elsewhere, I guess it wouldn't yet.
And that's what we're, we're asking them. Can they go elsewhere? You know, there's a big median in the middle of eighty-one, we're behind our homes. You know, we, we are directly on eighty-one. There's a big median on there. They were asked about, you know, possibly using part of the median, uh, you know, to expand it to third lanes. And the other, the only other thing too, uh, we were in a meeting last Wednesday with, uh, PennDOT was going through and, um, they were reviewing all the, uh, bridge work that they're going to be doing. And in the interim, they said that their plans are, in the future, maybe five to ten years from now, expanding eighty-one to three lanes. So, they're gonna waste a hundred and seventy-six million dollars, 'cause that's the cost of this project, for something now that potentially the PennDOT will be doing five to ten years from now. You know, so it's, our taxpayer money, first of all, too. A hundred and seventy-six million dollars is a lot of money. And forty million of that is being contributed from PennDOT. You know, so, i- it's just, it's a waste in our eyes, of course, because we're directly affected with it. And, and it's, uh, this is a development that I, I don't even know how many homes, maybe three hundred homes are in there?
One home is bad enough. It, it shouldn't happen. One home is bad enough. It shouldn't happen. I don't agree with this at all. I'm, you know, very vaguely familiar with the program. I've had a couple of complaints on it. I have not had time to research it. I will be honest with you. I am not in favor of any of this that you're telling me. And I thought we had a planning commission that we do I-81 at the commissioner's level, don't we? We have a...
The corridor 81.
Corridor 81.
Well, what do they have to say about all this?
We'd have to check, Commissioner. I'm never really there. Because what I was going to suggest, if Ms. Tompkins, if you could leave your contact information with Tracy, my heart will bring my assistant.
Sure.
I have assistant, and maybe for the next work session, we can make...
Absolutely.
Have somebody come in to talk to us about it to get us more speed on it.
Any of the 81 corridor conversations that I'm aware of, and they have a meeting quite regularly about that, the chances of them turning it into three lanes anytime in the future are slim.
It's, yeah, it's not a...
Something that's on their radar. They don't feel it's conceivable to do.
Who doesn't, PennDOT?
Yeah. It's called the 81 corridor organizations, group of PennDOT.
Well, they were quoted in the newspaper, in the Scranton Times, the last piece of an article. They said that in the future, their future plans are to expand 81 to three lanes.
Well, we do have someone that works with the county that's on that committee, and we'll reach out to him in the meantime, too. So when we do talk about it at the next work session, he'll be able to have a better answer for that.
Okay.
We also, excuse me, when we were at the meetings we've been making more recently in the Abingtons, and they're very upset about it. And they also have land that they were going to relinquish to the state to epicide this and get everything squared away. It's going to hurt their income in that area. Like, why is anybody going to stop in the Abingtons when they can keep going over the turnpike? And another thing about this road they want, they call it a speed ramp. And one of the people from the turnpike says, well, have you ever tried following a tractor and trailer coming off the turnpike once it gets off up there? Well, in today's technology, most of the tractor and trailers never even coming off these highways. And anywhere they go, they're automatic. Skids guys don't shift. It's like driving a car. They have that much power in them. And they go up and down 81 right now. They're right in our backyard. And they're going down there 90 miles an hour and better. And they're going so fast, they have to use a brake all the time. You know, and right in the middle of the night and stuff. They don't need anything any faster. And the congestion's never been like that in all the years we were there, except for the last five years or six years. I mean, we used to get in the turnpike, or not turnpike, but the 81, go all the way to Wicks Bear. It'd take me 40 minutes, maybe at the most, to go to the VA or something like that. Now, it's longer, but they've been doing all this construction over the years. They've been backing it up and backing it up. And that's where the congestion is. And the people up there that we live at, and all a lot of those homes and areas, they're, like my wife was saying, a gentleman called up the other day for my wife, because she's been spearheading this, and they said that his grandparents owned the land that they bought, built it themselves. Then this gentleman's father had the land for many years. This other gentleman that called us and wrote us, and we've been putting petitions out there all over, he was in the Coast Guard, probably his whole career. He got out. He's in his 50s now. He just spent, how many, 40?
$40,000 he gave to a contractor several days before he received the letter of eminent domain.
That's ridiculous.
And now he's stuck there. And now they want to take his house, and his is one of the houses right in the beginning, and they're going to take it. And a lot of us are up now, and I'm 70 myself, and a lot of people up there are elderly, and they've been up there since they were younger. Where are we going to go? And now they're telling us what, about two years from now, or three years from now, or whatever, they're going to let us know when, when, and how many homes are going to take. And by that time, I'm going to be almost 73, and a lot of the other women and people up there are a lot older. Where are these people going to go? They worked their whole lives. Their husbands died up there with them, and their family, they have memories. Where are they going to go? To an old age home now? They're still capable of doing things, but you just can't pick up and start from the beginning, you know?
It's ridiculous.
And it depends on us to go get...
We're going to the next work session.
An older home, or what they consider the...
Fair market value.
Fair amount of value. There's homes up there that exceed what they go over a certain period of land. There are places, homes, to check it out. A lot of our homes are worth a lot more. And it's just a shame that this is happening to these people. And it's not just us, but they just come in there a lot of nowhere. In other words, they're trying to say, we're not important. And when the commission, the turnpike commission, they wouldn't even sit down and talk to any of us, only to the Abington Township people, and they wanted a committee of seven, and that's all. And we only have one meeting, and everything they propose, like my wife said, has been, I don't want to hear it. I don't want to hear it. I don't want to hear it. It's already done. And there are different phases. They've been, they have it on their brochures, their pamphlets. And I think they're in the middle of the second phase. And by prolonging it, it's going to double up the money, the money, the money. And I believe they said after they put two thirds of the money into it, with all the research and everything, it's a gold thing, no matter what we do.
Yeah, there's no turning back. So we know, we see the activity. We see people out there doing surveys. We see them with the strips, doing the counts for the studies. So we know they're moving forward. And like I said, we're at wit's end now.
And this is the Pennsylvania, Turnpike Commission is doing this.
Along with PennDOT. PennDOT is contributing $40 million to the project.
And PennDOT is so, or Turnpike is so strong, so powerful. We've heard, and I know for a fact, when I was down there a couple of months ago... In Pittsburgh, they've already taken, I think, 165 homes. They're doing the same thing in there.
Yeah, the Turnpike Commission...
And they don't want to hear nothing, because they said, you know, and these people are losing their homes, and there's not enough land down there for people to buy homes and stuff.
There's an election in November. I suggest you get everybody out to vote in November and switch that guy.
The government, within the government, and they're not, they don't have to answer to anybody. Whosever the hunch you is down there, he gets up in the morning, wants to make a decision. He's going to take this, take that. He does. And nobody could do anything.
In the meeting, we did have a meeting with the Turnpike Commission and our supervisors after a team of seven people were added as a committee. That's the only way they meet with us. And they spread out a great big map on a table like this. And we see our homes on there, but the construction, and I said this to the person from the Turnpike Commission, you're doing construction up here where the, all the congestion is way down there. You know, it's not going to alleviate it. We live there for 40, 41 years. We know it's not congestion up here. You know, so we're, like I said, we're just reaching out to as many people and getting this out as much as we can to stop it. We need to stop it. We don't, and our biggest fear is they're, they're working currently today on this project.
That's crazy.
They said that, truly grateful, we've been with so many people since this happened a few months ago, that if the federal government gives any kind of money or financing to the Turnpike Commission, being such a private tier government, they could step in, and all the counties and everything could stop in and do something about it. If it's not, then like I say, they're like a quasi-government.
Well, yeah, that's...
They don't care. They take and take and take.
That was what Senator Casey's office, Senator Blake's office, Senator Toomey's office said to us, that because there's no federal money going into this, and we don't know that, they're saying there's no federal money. Because there's no federal money going into it, they really can't do anything, like they can't stop it themselves. So we, first of all, we need to find out if there's federal money going into it. And, but like I said, we've reached out to all of the offices, and we're just keep, we're here today.
We're going to add our next work session. Our chief of staff is going to bring in some delegates for us to talk to, to see exactly where we're at on this. And exactly what the funding is and how this mechanism is, and so we have some answers for you.
You know what they also said, that the turnpike, the reason, big thing about it, and why they don't want to let the free access to the turnpike up by us and everything, that the turnpike, and we never notice, is owned by privateer enterprises.
Like those bond investors that they can't do it because of that.
They don't want to lose any money. And that's what it's all about.
We're going to look into it at the work session. I'd like to thank you guys for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming in.
We feel for you. I know you don't want to leave your home. I get, I understand. I think the whole board does. We're definitely going to look into this.
Okay. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What was your name, sir?
Walter.
Walter. And did they make you put your cellphone in that thing, Walter? Yes, they did.
Could you do me a favor? Joe, could you take their phone numbers before they leave, so we have some, you know, contact information? Fran? Okay. Thank you.
Did you tell them you were coming to our meeting downstairs, and they made you do that?
Yes.
Yes.
And they still made you put your phone in that?
I asked them where the commissioner's meeting was, so I, we both had to do it.
And then we, my wife, we're getting on the elevator, and a couple of guards there. And one of the guards says, my wife asked a question, why do we have to put these in here or the plastic bag? He jumped right out. Well, you've got a question about it?
Yeah, so I was...
Very hostile.
What was very hostile to you, sir?
One of the guards downstairs, the way his attitude was.
Yeah, he, we were talking at the elevator, and he overheard us, over where they are. And he said, you have a problem.
Really?
Just ask. We've never, we've never been in this building before. I have not. So I didn't know why, why, because I saw some people come in with the phone not in it. It's no big deal, though.
It is a big deal. Trust me. It's a very big deal, as Joe Biden would say.
A couple of nuts and bolts here. Jerry wouldn't know where I am. And I put them on a counter, and I was looking at it like, oh, am I going to throw this at somebody? You know? I just don't like the way it's been going.
You're not the last to complain, so thank you so much for letting us know.
No, thanks for coming in. Thank you.
I was a cop for a long time. You don't treat people like that.
That's right, you don't.
Thanks.
Walter, please make sure you give me that letter, too.
Yeah.
That's an outrage. You know what?
We'll hear what they have to say at our next meeting.
John, who appoints the Turnpike Commission? Doesn't the governor and the state?
We have to, we, we'll get all the information.
Depending on who's governor. Oh, I can't, I can't wait to talk to... Wish I knew this before I went to see Captain.
Okay. Anyone else?
That's an outrage.
Hello, I'm Dr. Stephanie Bressler. I'm from Scranton, and I'm representing...
We need your address, Mrs. Bressler.
Oh, Dr. Bressler, 1402 East Gibson Street in Scranton. And I'm representing progressive women of northeastern Pennsylvania today. And I want to preface my questions by saying that I asked these same questions at last month's prison board meeting, and I was advised that that was the wrong place and that I should be asking them at the commissioner's meeting. Of the hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees that have been expended related to the grand jury probe into sex abuse at the prison, the majority is reported to have been spent on attorneys reviewing emails and documents seized during the raid last September. My question, my first question is, has that review been completed? Will the report of that review be made public? What is the outcome of that review? For example, can you tell us what percentage of the documents that were reviewed were determined to be inappropriate for the attorney general's office to look at?
A lot.
Okay.
John, could you?
The reason for the reporting of the law firm, because originally, the attorney general...
Bring the mic down, Jen.
The attorney general subpoenaed all of the county emails from every single department in the county, roughly over 13 million. It included a lot of things that were confidential, with the children and youth documents, with the medical documents. So that was kind of the reason. Law firm, we hired and developed some parameters to do searches on them. They called that down significantly. I don't want to give you an exact number, because I don't have that sitting here today, but it was probably in the 400,000 area, and then that was called down more. I would tell you, the bulk of the documents that both parties agreed that were relevant to the inquiry have been turned over to the attorney general's office. But I would also indicate to you that it's an ongoing investigation, so at times they may require additional documents to be just applied to.
Okay.
Okay, so the 13 million seized in the raid, the review of those has now been completed?
There was not a review of the 13 million, because that would have taken years upon years upon years. What they did is, they developed a protocol based upon search terms to go through the 13 million through a computer, to call them down to a manageable number. So based upon that protocol, then they came up with over 100,000. I don't know the exact number sitting here today. And then they reviewed those and turned over those documents to the attorney general. But I can get you specific numbers. I wasn't prepared for that.
Okay. But my question is, is that process now completed? And I understand that there might be requests for additional documents. But that initial process, has that now been completed? And will the, has the expenditure of funds for that process been completed?
My understanding is, the last time I had a discussion, the majority of the review of those have been completed. I can't sit here and tell you definitively that it has been done completely. But as it is ongoing, and there's original, additional requests, those two need to be reviewed, those are the same goal. I do not think it's been totally completed, but I will, I will find out.
And will there be a public report?
A public one?
A public...
So will you be making a report available to the public, reflecting basically what you just told me, but providing more detail?
There will not be a report pending an investigation. There is an investigation pending, and we're cooperating fully with the investigation. There may at some point when the investigation is concluded, but during the investigation, of course, there will be...
Right. I understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings.
Okay. Well, thank you to all that came up and brought some very interesting comments into our meeting today. Are you both going to leave, or just one? Okay.
All of one minute, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm only, I'm busting you. I would like to ask in regards to the Juvenile Detention Center. I have received numerous calls, ironically, from just the public requesting information on what's going to happen to our employees. So I don't know if maybe the employees had other people call me to request that information, or if it's just in general, people are concerned about our employees at the juvenile detention center losing their positions, which I guess that could possibly be. But I would like to have either executive session scheduled, or, you know, something, so that we can discuss what is going to occur with those currently employed at the juvenile detention center. Yeah, what is our plan? Because I mean, I'm really not familiar with what our plan is going into the future. There's a couple of things that was brought up today, but certainly in regards to any properties being taken by government officials is, I'm completely against that. And I'm not sure what they're thinking, as I did not, like I said, did not research this in depth. And I did hear about it. I had a few complaints about it. But I certainly will do, and hope that we do as a commission, everything we can to make sure that we save the homes of our residents in our county. That's, you know, my main goal as to why I didn't vote for reassessment is to save the homes of property owners, so that not one person would be in jeopardy of losing their home. So I certainly thank the Tompkins for coming in, and I appreciate your time here. And I will make sure that I make this number one priority for my work. So thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
And please keep me informed of any meetings that are occurring. I'd be happy to attend and support your cause.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. With that said, I guess I'll move on to the issue in regards to reassessment. I just wanted to thank, I'm not sure who the people are. I mean, I have their names that wrote in to support me and the Scranton Times and Randolph, Randolph Horowitz, who has praise for Cummings in regards to reassessment. Thank you so much for taking the time out to write that letter. Richard O'Malley, Peckville. Is he related, Pat? No? Good. He's not related. He's not related. I wanted to make sure everybody knew he's not related. This, this one, I got a lot of comments and calls on. I am a 70-year-old homeowner.
That's actually my middle name.
Is it really?
No, I'm only kidding.
Oh, jeez, you know, you're such a fuss. I am a 70-year-old homeowner and liberal Democrat. I enjoy Times Tribune columnist Chris Kelly's columns, but I will vote for Lackawanna County Commissioner Lorraine Cummings because of her stance on reassessment. Thank you, Richard O'Malley, for that vote of confidence and for saying you will vote for me as a liberal Democrat. I have many, just so the audience knows, that call me and say they will support me in the upcoming election, not just because of my stance on reassessment, but because of my stance on many issues. So I thank you so much for making that a public statement. God bless you for your courage, because I know you certainly probably have taken a lot of heat for this letter to the editor. So thank you so much for standing up on principle. I greatly appreciate that. And to all those that write letters into the editor, if I've forgotten any, I really appreciate the fact that you take the time out to do that. It means more to me than you know. And I do save all of them. And, you know, I do greatly appreciate the fact that you take time out, valuable time out of your day to do that and send it into the Scranton Times on my behalf, on the support that you have for me. You know, with that said, there is, there is a lot of talk in the media about how, you know, we see these posters that say, there's no hate, hate doesn't have a home here. home here," or something like that. And I always talk about that, because I, it just seems so hypocritical to me. I mean, you put a sign out in front of your yard to say other people in your neighborhood are haters, like, I just don't like that. But hey, knock yourself out. I'm, I'm not gonna put one in my yard. I'd put one that says "Love lives here" or "God lives here" in front of my house. But it's amazing to see those same people will go online behind a keyboard and write the most vile, nastiest commentary ever. It's amazing. And then try and get other people to join them in that little campaign, and then to admit it.[639.32][639.32](laughing) It's just to say that they purposely are harassing a politician online and getting other people who are in state-funded organized groups to organize and harass a sitting politician. "No, I can't do anything about it. Am I complaining about it?" Yeah. And, and what's wrong with complaining about somebody that's doing something so off the wall? They came on my personal Facebook page and posted over one hundred pictures in a comment section that I had to go through my, do you know how long, that was two and a half hours of my time that I had to go through and delete all those? And then delete that person, obviously, because I was at work when they did this. These people are collecting public assistance and on medical assistance. I'm paying for them to stay home and basically go around and harass people for reasons I have no idea why. And I will not mention their names. I will never give them a name. If you want to see anything, go on my commissioner's page, because it's there. But just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, I'm gonna read some of the things that they wrote, because the public needs to be aware of this. "I know I broke over one hundred tags, County Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Correct me if I am wrong, but I don't think I have used more than a dozen cuss words throughout this whole social media campaign. I called," well, he says the word, I'll say BS, "a lot, but those were necessary for the mission. I know I hurt your feelings with the memes, but I use direct quotes, and an unflattering picture." Well, that's what the Scranton Times tries to do all the time in their cartoons with John Coles, so what's the, who cares? I know what they do. "Welcome to politics. If you can't handle pressure, resign. Before you blocked me on your personal page, and rightfully so, privacy settings are important for public figures. I had a great debate with one of your friends that you were celebrating friendship with for a year. She was a Democrat and stood up for you. Deep down, you might be a good person. Bring her out and let's have a productive conversation about the facts, about Act 16, and let's end this embarrassing misinformation session together, or I can keep trolling your page until Election Day. Your choice, Commissioner. Let us know what you want to do. Signed..." And the names of the people that are signed are one that I will mention, because he was actually spotlighted by the Scranton Times in a response to me in the paper, Patrick K. Nightengale, who is supposedly a respectable person. I just can't imagine that these kind of posts. And I have a call, I, I know I talked to the solicitor about this, but I have called a personal attorney about this, because at this point, it is harassment. And I did call Facebook, and they told me I am correct. Regardless of being a political figure, it's now currently harassment when they put over a hundred tags on a page. And then they do the same thing on my page. And now they're harassing other pages with hundreds of tags. It's a problem now. And I think that, that, I can't be sure, but I'm, what they're looking into is, this could be similar to mailing a hundred items to your home, and you have the ability to block that from happening at your home. You can tell them you will not accept mail from that. But because I'm a politician, I'm supposed to allow somebody to put over one hundred tags on a political page, which, John, I was told I, I don't have to do that. So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just get a personal attorney and take care of this, because that's just beyond the pale at this point. You know, if you want to call, you know, criticize me, I can handle criticism. If you want to have a debate, I love to debate. Everybody that knows me knows I love to debate. I don't have a problem with that. But harassment is a completely different story, and threats are a completely different story. Cyberbullying, our first lady is working on, and I, I hope she starts to bring charges against cyberbullying, because it certainly is a problem, and it shouldn't have to be that way. If you have a complaint, I had an open forum, this person did attend, and so did all those people that were tagged on that, did attend my, my informational session, had complete opportunity to stay afterwards and speak to me, but they chose to leave. They could have asked questions, they chose not to, and then afterwards proceeded to send this campaign out of harassment, not only to me, but people that are listed as my friends and colleagues. It's an outrage that this kind of thing goes on, and it's, it's something that they call organizing. You know, I was in a Tea Party group. We did not do that. We didn't harass people. We educated people. That's, that's a more acceptable way I think things should be done. But to, I mean, it's just like somebody coming to your home and just standing out there, which I've had that told to me that they will organize their groups and do that as well, come down in front of my house and stand there and sleep there and harass me. I mean, that's crazy. And I'm, all you taxpayers are paying for this, because they're on welfare. How do you like that one? Isn't that just, just grand? Let's, let's use our money from our paychecks to go and harass people and not hold down a job. And not to mention how they, the one person is, is going to court in September in Luzerne County for charges being filed because of what he's done to the police. I mean, you should see some of the things he says about our, our fellow officers. So, take that with whatever you want to take it as, but it, it's, it's just ridiculous. It's, I, I have no problem with somebody coming and saying, "You know what? I don't like what you're doing. I think you're wrong." Fine. But this with the hundred tag thing and all this kind of nonsense is, is off the charts. It's, it's, it's not acceptable. And, and I have a right to complain about that, and I don't care who calls me, whatever they want to call me, because it shouldn't happen. It's a complete waste of space on my time, and, and it's terrible to do that to people. Anyway, moving on, last complaint on, on this current government. I have to wonder what, what this government is currently thinking. I mean, between all the stuff that I've spoken about with, you know, it, it's amazing that the people that I just talked about that are harassing me like that, they get, they get credit in the paper and I get condemned. It, it's, it's so strange. John, I was talking to you about this before we came in the meeting. You know, the media seems to be more concerned about the drug addicts and dealers than those of us that are fighting addiction. There's a, there's a cartoon in, in the paper, and they're saying, "You gotta wonder what she's smoking." You know, it's, it's crazy. This is craziness. I don't understand that, that, I don't understand that. I'm trying to prevent things from happening to our kids, and yet these people that do drugs are more suitable to defend than a sitting commissioner. I don't understand that. This world is upside down. It's upside down. Last thing, an article came out, "Union's Investment Pays Off, Court Okays Wolf's Home Care Unionization Scheme." This is, this is exactly why, this article is why I got involved in county government in 2009. It was the, it was the, the straw that broke the camel's back, as far as I was concerned. Governor Rendell set out to unionize nurse aide, nurse aides and create a nurse aide registry, putting essentially home health companies like myself, private home health companies out of business. So, I'm gonna read this, because it's extremely important for our area and for those that get private duty care to understand what's going on. "Today, the State Supreme Court reinstated Governor Tom Wolf's 2015 executive order." This was not voted on by the legislature. This was an executive order allowing more than twenty thousand home care workers to be unionized. Wolf's order was previously declared illegal and permanently enjoined by the Commonwealth Court, a decision overturned today by the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania in a five-to-two ruling, which is why it is so important that we know who's running for Supreme Court and all of our justices in the country and in our state. The union benefiting from today's ruling, the United Home Care Workers of Pennsylvania, is a partnership of SEIU and AFSCME, two of Governor Wolf's largest campaign donors, which together contribute, contributed more than 1.5 million dollars to his election. Since 2013, these unions have given Wolf nearly four million dollars combined. After today's ruling, AFSCME and SEIU now stand to gain more than eight million dollars per year in dues from home care workers. So, they're going to take dues out of these nurses' aides' paychecks. That's all it was for. "Government union leaders invested heavily in Governor Tom Wolf's election campaign, and today, that investment paid off," commented Charles Mitchell, president and CEO of the Commonwealth Foundation. "This is outrageous. This decision will hurt both home care workers, union rules and regulations, will invade these intimate relationships at Governor Wolf's behest for no good reason. It is shameful that the court has put union special interests above the well-being of thousands of Pennsylvanians like Don Lembrecht, who cares for his dear friend Dave Smith, a quadriplegic who requires 24-hour care, and like Connie Houston, who assists her disabled son Greg with the routines of daily life. How will skimming millions of dollars from home care workers' paychecks to fund union leaders help people like these? It won't. This is about money and politics." During the 2015 judicial elections, AFSCME and SEIU gave a combined 888,451 dollars in dues and PAC money in Pennsylvanians for judicial reform, a super PAC which supported winning Democratic candidates for the State Supreme Court. Additionally, these unions gave more than 100,000 dollars combined to Supreme Court justices. "It is impossible to ignore the millions of dollars that have flowed from government union leaders to Governor Wolf and members of the State Supreme Court that led to Wolf's order in today's ruling," continued Mitchell. "Elected officials should be prioritizing and protecting the lives of those who need care, not treating them as political favors to be traded on a whim." And I apologize to my fellow commissioners, because I know that's not your problem, but it is mine, because this just put my private duty business out of, out of commission. This is what I've been fighting for since 2009, when Governor Rendell did this, because now, private duty agencies would have to charge thirty to forty dollars to an eighty-year-old woman or man in order to provide the services that they're gonna provide through tax dollars. How does a private business and a eighty-year-old person compete with tax dollars they don't? So, they can jack up our state tax dollars to fund paying nurse aides sixteen to twenty dollars an hour and give them benefits, but you know what? A private business cannot. And the other issue with this is, why, they're going to be able to get union dues from these nurse aides' checks? This isn't, this is insanity. Some of the people that take care, like these two people are talking about, some of the people that take care of their family members are daughters, uncles, brothers, sisters, and they're taking care of their family members. They're going to be charged union dues. They're going to be made into union workers because of this ruling. This is outrageous. It's absolutely outrageous, and it's disgusting, and it's just, yeah, one more, I don't even Gestapo government underhanded nonsense that occurs and shouldn't, and, and it's despicable. And it just put my business out of business. I could tell you that right now, because there's no way that I can compete with these kind of rates. There's no way. And, and, you know, this is just going to be the service industry being taken out by the state. Now, the state is gonna be in the home care business. Well, congratulations to them, the thugs, that, that are gonna be taking over home care agencies. They already took my staffing end with Obamacare, and now they're gonna take the private sector away from me and, and all my patients. I mean, this is, this is outrageous. I, I'm, I'm sorry, commissioners. I'm sorry. I just cannot be quiet on this. This is exactly why I got involved in politics to begin with, and we have fought this, we have won since 2009. We have won, because this is an executive order. This is not voted on by the legislatures that were voted for to be put in office, and it's an outrage to be hurting businesses based on union dues and, and union thuggery. And, and I'm sorry. That's what it is. And I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to stop, because I'll continue to go on. I'm so upset by this ruling, and I, I hope that the people wake up, and in November, make sure that you go vote to get this guy out of office. And I, I don't even know if I'm supposed to be saying that, John, but I'm just so furious over this. It's, it's ridiculous. Sorry. I'm gonna stop now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nauteriani?
I'm good.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank our emergency services that had a tremendous last week. They had so many calls, they took care of so many issues. All the police departments, fire departments, EMTs, they did an incredible job. Our 911 operators, all the management staff, everybody, they kept everybody up to date to make sure everything was okay, and making sure that the places that they immediately evacuated were evacuated. Just like to thank all of them. They did an incredible job. Also like to thank our Parks and Recreation Department. They did a lot of cleanup. They did a great job getting our parks in order, and our roads and bridges for making sure that everything was in order along our roads down Lackawanna County controls. The question about the Colts buses, that is a ridership type of thing, where they, they actually look to see how many people would actually ride, and that determines if it's worthwhile for Colts to actually go up that far. So, if you'd like to get a letter or something, you can either drop something off to us or drop something, it'd probably be better to Director Fume at Colts, maybe it's something they can look into to see if there's ridership. And I know, like you said, there is an industrial park up there. At this point, there may be, at this point, there might be a reasoning for them to bring a bus up in that area for people to be able to ride back and forth. To Bob Bowles, it's good to see you back, first and foremost. I think we put you in, and I think we actually told you to reach out to George Kelly, see if there's any grant money available for anything that has to do with the post-traumatic stress disorder situation, that if there's a way to, you know, if that money's there, it's available, then maybe he could help you to find something to be able to see if that will work for our veterans that have post-traumatic stress disorder. To the Tockins family, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some people come into our next work session, which will be next week, so we have a better idea exactly what's going on. We understand what's going on, but we didn't actually see who it's happening to, and I didn't realize that it was going through houses or anything, that I just knew about the way the ramp was gonna be set, but I didn't know where it was at.
Ridiculous.
So, it's something that we'll be talking about next week's meeting. So, yeah, you will be in our thoughts. I'd like to also remind everyone that LaFesta Italiano is coming up. It's a great weekend, great Labor Day weekend down at Lackawanna County Courthouse, that's starting Friday, August 31st, Saturday, September 1st, Sunday, September 2nd, and Monday, September 3rd. Great opportunity to enjoy a vast amount of different types of foods, especially Italian food. Come out with your families and enjoy the courthouse, enjoy the food, and in first and foremost, enjoy the music, and hats off to LaFesta Italiano, their committee does a fabulous job, and Chris DiMaggio and everybody else that's involved, they're second to none. It's a great way to end our summer. Also, I'd just like to bring up on September 8th, there will be the Commissioners' Cross-Country Race at McDay Park, and on September 14th, there will be a Senior Health Fair at PNC Field, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that really matters. You can get your flu shots at this. There's gonna be all types of vendors there. Please come on up. You can see where the, our champion rail riders play, and it's an opportunity to have something to eat, and get your blood pressure checked. There's just so many things that they'll do that day that's free and for the people of Lackawanna County. So, I implore anybody, please come up. The more the merrier. And September 15th, and this is near and dear to my heart, where the Race for the Cure is gonna be down at Lackawanna County Courthouse. Thousands of people come out and participate in the Race for the Cure. It's a great opportunity for us to come out and remember those who lost their lives to breast cancer and those that fought and won. Also, on September 22nd, Lackawanna County will have a fishing derby will be taking place at Merly Sernowski Park. Any questions on that, it will be, you can call Parks and Recreation at 963-6764, and you can find out how to sign up and what time the signups are. And last but not least, we're gonna have Heroes Day, and that's gonna be up at, that's gonna be up at the Rail Riders, and Fran, what's the date on that?
Same date, 22nd.
So, the 22nd, okay, so that's gonna be on the 22nd, too, so it's Heroes Day. Come on out. You'll see all the different apparatuses for EMTs, police, firemen, and it's good to bring the kids out, because our kids, our children need to know that law enforcement is there to protect and serve, as well as the fire department, EMT, and the people to, that are heroes of ours in the community, and we should always remember that. And last but not least, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Labor Day weekend coming up next weekend, and please, anyone that's traveling, travel safe. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, jeez, I got, Joan would be mad about this. And last but not least, Friends of the Scranton Public Library Book Sale, September eleventh through the sixteenth, Tuesdays and Thursdays, ten to six PM, Fridays, seven, uh, ten to seven-thirty, and Saturday, ten to five, and Sunday, eleven to four. Books, DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, one to two dollars, marketplace at Steetown. Joan, you better be there, because I announced it. Thank you, everyone, and have a happy, safe Labor Day weekend. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, Bill.
Sorry.